Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming on this rainy day. I guess I have to do the roll call. Sandy.
Here.
Chris. Here.
Chrissy.
Here.
Mark. Here. Joanne.
Here.
Cindy, absent excuse, she's actually setting up the elections in the high school right now, so she might be walking in later, I don't know, if she is, she'll probably be all sweaty and messy, but that's okay. I'm here too. First thing on agenda, we have a public hearing for a police special assessment, entertain a motion, open up for a public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open public hearing for police special assessment at 7:03.
Why don't we do all of them at once?
Make a motion to open public hearing for police special assessment, fire special assessment, and garbage special assessment at 7:03.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support to open up hearing for police special assessment, fire special assessment, and garbage special assessment at 7:03. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, motion carries. This time I'd like to open up the public hearing, if anyone wants to say anything, comment about any of the special assessments, you know, come on up and state your name and your comment. Going once, going twice. Sold. I'll entertain a motion to close our special assess, or our public hearings.
Support.
Okay, that was a motion. I'll make a motion to...
Support.
Yeah. Sherry's taking our notes. To close the special assessment public hearings.
At what time?
At 7:04.
7:04.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next we have, I'll entertain a motion for bills payable.
Mr. Supervisor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the bills payable in the amount of $183,759.04.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Chris.
Yes.
Chrissy.
Yes.
Artie, yes. Joanne.
Chris, yes, yes.
Okay. Mark.
Yes.
And you down there, Sandy.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. All right, I'd like to entertain a motion, amend, I'll just amend, make the motion, to amend the agenda and add under new business number 15, police department taser purchase.
Support.
We have motion and support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, right now we have public comments, do we have any public comments on anything? No public comments, moving right ahead. At the concession agenda, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda to include the minutes, board meetings of July 16th, 2018, and synopsis, reports, check reports, June police and water department reports, road watch notice, communications from fire police department for unclaimed property, and Elginak master plan assistance, a thank you to the township board, and thank you to the police department, requests, assessor Lawton, training September 27th, for Lawton, Meldrum, and Zappa, at $205 per person, and for treasurer Hiltonan, training for MTA fall conference, $305 plus lodging.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. I will make a slight correction under the training for assessing, Lawton is not going, she requested it for Meldrum and Rizepa.
Gotcha.
So that's two people going to that. Okay, we have motion and support, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Supervisors report. Um, let's see, we had a, on our fire department, we had an open house last Wednesday in the mainland, and it was Wednesday from 4:00 to 7:00. And just wanted to, um, talk a little bit about a couple things, actually. Tomorrow, we all know, we have election, or election to see if we get a bond proposal to buy new equipment, capital replacement bond. If it passes, what I'd like to do is set up a committee to review exactly what we're going to be spending the money on, to make sure we get the best bang for the buck for our taxpayers, and I'd like a few trustees on there, you know, working with chief George Rose. So any volunteer, I know Mark and Joanne would want to serve on that, anybody else? I mean, we could have up to, you know, somebody else, if you want, if not, that's okay too. But I'd like to get a few people on there, and just go over, you know, what the plan is, so.
Will you be serving on the committee?
If, if there's not another trustee, I will, yes.
Okay. And what about chiefs' officers?
Yeah, we can, we can, we can bring them in too.
Just talking out loud.
Yep. Yeah, there's no, there can only be three of us, there can be as many, so, um, I just want to get that set up, and it doesn't even have to be an official committee, just to recommend how we go forward, and just so one person or one or two people aren't making the decisions, because there will be important decisions, so.
Brainstorming a little bit.
Right.
Or get information.
Right.
You know, so we know what's going on.
Mm-hmm. I also wanted to inform the board, I got a call, actually it was announced Friday, that the fire department, we have two outstanding grants out there, and the fire, we did receive a grant, and it's, I believe it was 95%, is it chief?
What's that?
The FEMA grant for the ventilation.
Yes.
Yeah. We received a grant for actually ventilation in both stations of $104,000.
Oh, good.
So, um, we're just waiting for the paperwork to get that going, so, and that's another thing, that's one thing that we did put in for the bond, that we necessarily don't have to spend now, we could reallocate that money somewhere else, or, you know, the, how, how the, the language is, in the middle, it's up to $2 million, we could roll back $100,000 too. So that would be a decision that I would want this committee to make, so, based on our needs and everything. So that's good news, like I said, we officially, it's going to be coming out this next week. I did receive calls from Debbie Stavon on Gary Peter's offices congratulating us, we're the only fire department in St. Clair County that got this grant, I don't know how many others applied, and we were still, haven't heard on a second grant that we wrote along with Ira and Elginak, to purchase Scott packs, that's what I call them.
That's with Marine City and Elginak.
Or Marine City and Elginak, for Scott packs, so we're waiting to hear on that one. That's good news. This past week, week and a half ago, I met with the self-appointed island blight committee, that's how I term them, and it was very good, we, I think I was in, spent three hours with them, driving around the island, and, you know, we were looking at different properties, it was a good two-way discussion, I'm sure our next meeting on the island, they'll, they'll talk about it, I educated them on a lot of things, and a lot of things they pointed out, we already had, um, things in process, in motion on them, and, I mean, they came away very happy, and they did point out a few things with, that might need attention, and they gave me a basic report, I handed that over to our zoning officer, and he's going to write up a report, and we'll give it back to him here in a few days, on the status on each one of their concerns, so, some of the things weren't blight, I had, you know.
You had to differentiate.
Ugly isn't blight, you know, and, and, so, it was, it was good, good conversation, it was, I thought it was beneficial, I believe they, they did too. So, going on that, there's the sunken houseboat over there, it was half removed, and the marine contractor left, and we're getting, we're going back to court to, to get a judgment allowing us to get somebody to finish the salvage removal, and I heard that they just, the contractor just showed up, did you go down there?
No, I haven't.
Okay, but I think it showed up yesterday, so we're waiting to see what happens, I still want to go and get the judgment, basically saying that, you know, if this guy fails to remove it, that we, will give us the right to go in there, hire somebody, and charge it back to the property owner. It needs to get done, so, um, this past week, a few days ago, we did sell our bond to fund the Colony Water project, the, the main, and it was, it was interesting, actually our council was very worried, because the day before, the Fed met, and they were just talking about how interest rates are going to be going up, because the economy's doing so well, and, you know, it's not good to sell a bond the day after that happens, and they were worried about what kind of interest rate we were going to get. Well, they were very happy that, they were really amazed what, what happened, and we were able to sell the bond at 3.74. And talking with, with our bond council, and they basically told me, if this bond does pass tomorrow for the fire bond, that, that is a more secure bond than us, for a special assessment in a small area, and our interest rate should be better than that for, for that, I mean, I'm just telling you, they're guessing, but it was very interesting. Had a meeting over at the water plant, they're having some issues, I haven't, did you hear, John, on the report, they're going to give us a report, there were some issues on the air compressors.
Yeah, nothing yet.
Okay, he was going to give us a report, and they may have to be replaced, one, they're both having issues, we just replaced one at a time, and that, you know, you had, if you guys remember the tour, that air compressor runs the whole, that's what pushes the water through the whole plant, so it is an important piece. We did get a quote for replacing, it would be $31,000, and our share of that would be about $19,000, so, I'll, I kind of, leaving busy, I'll ping, if you want to ping Andy, and see where we're up on that. Um, so I just wanted to give the board a heads up on that. Also, we are going to be joining, the, the water plant will be participating in the hearing, hearing to hearing, raw water monitoring system, and that's estimated cost about $5,000 a year, and it's well worth it, I believe. We did get our food license for the concession stamp, and I've been talking to the gal that wants, you know, open it up, and we're going to set up a schedule, she's going to open it up on a limited time, limited time, you know, so far this year, and next year we'll be ready to rock and roll real early on it. Whoa, big thunder. Had a meeting with sturgeon for tomorrow, it was a very good meeting, and they do the North Channel Sturgeon Classic Tournament, it's usually the last weekend of September, they really want to amp, amp up that, that whole event, they're looking to make it a full three-day event, they're looking at the possibility of doing a beer tent in our park on Fridays with a band, and just some more events in the park Saturday for sturgeon awareness and education, bringing in a live sturgeon for people to look at, and, and really kind of brainstorming ideas for that, but it was really nice, they, they want to assist us on our Pearl Beach Pier, because that's a really good spot for sturgeon fishing, and they're actually, they came to me to actually help fund, if they could help fund cameras on that, on the pier, like, three or four cameras, and, which we've talked about in the past, and because, believe it or not, there's some poachers that's being done on there, plus, they want to start a program, a $1,000 reward to any information leading to capture a poacher from the pier, and really the whole North Channel, so, they think that would help motivate that a little bit, so, just want to let the board know that, you know, that that's coming down the pipe, and I think it's all good.
They poach them for the eggs.
Yeah, the eggs, and, yeah, there's been some issues, um, late at night with people fishing out there, I, I hear bits and rumors about, we have some problems out there, Mike, I don't know, we've been, I don't know, we're just brainstorming, maybe we might have to do a permit for non-residents, or...
Mostly local.
Right.
There were any issues with anybody local.
Right, so there's been some people out there intimidating other people about even fishing out there, and haven't had any big problems yet, but we don't, we want, we don't want big problems.
We shall have a police presence down there, right?
Yeah.
Down there, monitoring, but can't be there 100% of the time, but I think all this is good, Artie, I think we should move forward with that and get his...
Right. If we have a camera out there with direct feed into the dispatch, that, you know, it's all good, good things. Also, there's a few piling that need to be replaced along the pier, I'm going to talk to Darren Gabriel, I mean, he's right there, get a price from him to put in some replacing piling, there's really three or four that are broken off, they should be pulled out, you know, we don't want anyone to get hurt on them. Had some meetings, lots of, especially both chiefs on the raft off coming this weekend, and we have a lot of agencies stepping up and helping us through it too, and I hear there's bad weather already forecast for it, so, I don't know what they're going to do.
They're not going to care.
No, they won't care. I also want to mention, we had a few complaints about a plane or something spraying over St. John's Marsh, and all the marshes and everything, but, actually, a friend of mine gave me a, a sample of what was happening down by their house, down by Joe Char and Ed Lane and everything, and that, at least, it turned out to be a pollen, and I, I called up the DEQ and Department of Ag, and showed them what we, told them what we found, and it was a certain kind of pollen that, yeah, that makes a lot of sense, that could happen, so, I don't know, I just want to mention to the board that, you know, we researched as much as we could.
So, what was spraying the pollen?
No, there wasn't anyone, there was rumors.
Pollen, it was pollen.
Oh, it was just a... It was pollen, tree pollen, so I don't even want to try, begin to pronounce what it was called, so, I just want to mention that too. All right, there's my supervisors' report. Unfinished business, none, new business, this is going to be my coach show. Please accept donation of Elginak Rotary Club of $5,000.
I'll make a motion to accept the donation from Elginak Rotary Club in the amount of $5,000.
Support. Okay, we have motion and support, and the donation is specifically going towards Hunter Safety Program, which the police put on free every year, so that's a, that's a good thing. Okay, motion and support, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next we have police firearm training simulator. I'll take it away there, chief.
Each year when we put the program on, we don't do the live-fire end of it, because basically the liability and that that comes with it, that, and the inconvenience of it, so what we've been doing is each year we use a, it's a video simulator, which pretty much, I mean, uses lifelike-looking animals and things like that, but it works out real well for the kids. That simulator, we always borrowed it from our rep from the DNR, that was heading up the Hunter Safety Program, she's since retired, that went with her, we didn't have access to it anymore, so, we started getting the word around that we want to start figuring out how to get our own. At that point, this Rotary stepped up and ended up giving us a donation of $5,000 between them and the community foundation, in order to help kick this off. After doing so, it was brought to my attention by Sergeant Cope, that we had some funds that needed to be deposited from our evidence room, which was either forfeited, unclaimed, or found property that was unclaimed, or seized property, that was deemed property of the police department. So, those funds were in total of just over $5,000, so, what I requested with the board on that is to use the two of these funds in order to go forward and purchase this simulator. The good thing about this simulator is, it's, it's something that we can expound upon, and does not have to be just used for Hunter Safety, we can also buy the software and buy the other firearms to go with it, this is basically, this is the platform, this is the, the most expensive part of it is getting this, and the projector, and it'll come with the software for the Hunter Safety, and most of the hardware that we're going to need to run this system. Now, we can add on to that the law enforcement software and the law enforcement side of it, to where now we've got our own in-house use-of-force scenarios that we can run, like you've seen in the ones that passed that we use when we have to rent by the hour down at the academy and that. This is something that we can then have in-house, and always have at our disposal, and always have there for training, and train more than a couple times a year on that, something we can utilize all the time. So we're kind of killing two birds with one stone, you know, most departments don't have something like this, I think it gives us a unique opportunity to be able to bring these two things together and use it all year round. They say the, the feedback that we get when we're doing Hunter Safety with it is just fantastic, plus, this one's much more updated than the one we've been using, so, I mean, really, it, it comes together a lot nicer, so.
Do you think that other communities, other fire departments, or the sheriff, or somebody who would want to use our, use it if we, if we purchase it?
It's hard to say, we can invite other people in for training in that.
Just see it or something, yeah.
Yeah, if we rent it.
Yeah.
And Mike, is that going to be used in lieu of actual certification, for, for live-fire or fire?
No, no, we can't do that, we always have to do live-fire, that's per M. Cole's mandate.
Okay.
So this is just something that adds on, this is something that if you talk to our insurance carriers, that they highly, highly recommend, and that is...
So it's a good practice for the life.
Absolutely. It's as close as you're getting to, because what it'll do is it runs through actual scenarios of, basically real people, actors up there, and you can run a multitude of different scenarios through it, so, I mean, there's, there's hundreds of them, so they don't know what's coming at them, and you can change these things up as they go, so.
It'd be interesting to see, I'd really like to see that.
Did you get a price for that software yet?
No, I'm still waiting for it, the gentleman is on vacation, supposed to be back this week, so as soon as he gets back, I'll hear from him, and I'll have more on that part of it, um, by the next board meeting, but, basically, wanted to get this rolling, this is the meat and potatoes of it, because I'd like to get this in, be able, be familiar with this before we start kicking off our next Hunter Safety Program, because that's going to be here before we know it, so.
So it sounds like you're not going to impact any line item, in any line?
No, not with this.
Mr. Supervisor, I'd like to make a motion that we support the police department in purchasing of the firearms training simulator for $8,931, of which it will come from two major funds, one being, lack of a better word, the unclaimed property fund, and the other part of the donation from the Elginak Rotary Club.
Support.
Okay, motion and support, any more discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next we have emergency boat repair for $1,408.62. Mike came to me, and this is June, and said, oh my gosh, we need boat fixed.
Improv for joby neater.
Boat fixed for joby neater, and, and, you know, it's the end of our budget year in June, and we didn't have any money, so, get it fixed, we'll put it on next year's budget, so, which, it worked out good, because Colony Marine didn't get around to billing us until
after the 1st of July anyways. They actually, they gave us a pretty good discount on this, the part was quite expensive, this is, it's a hydraulic steering system in there, so the hydraulic pump in the system went out in this, and if you seen where it is, to try and get to replace it, they did us a pretty good, pretty good favor here, stepping up to the plate.
Sounds like it.
Gave us a pretty good discount, so, it was one of those things that, we were stuck, we had to get it done. No steering meant no boat, so, and from what I understand, it's a common problem in these whalers, and, well, I think they've since corrected it, but the year that we have, it was something that was pretty common.
I'll make a motion to approve the emergency boat repair for 1,408.62, line item 207.000.931.00.
Support.
Motion support, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next we have renewal of our leads on line software program, does everyone, does anyone know what this is?
This comes up every annually, right?
Yeah.
Yes, this, this is a program that we use, that we can go in and do searches for anything, like auction sites, like eBay and such, salvage yards, pawn shops, things like that, and gives us some tools that we can go and investigate, if we did have, say, any kind of breaking enterings, anything like that, we've actually, we solved multiple cases with this.
Yeah, I was going to ask you how successful this has been.
Luckily, the bad guys aren't very smart most of the time, so, they give their thumbprint and ID when they go and sell these things, and turns out, these are the products we're looking for, so, works out pretty good for us.
So you catch them after they sell it, or they're trying to sell it?
Right, we link them to our, to our crime they committed here, and then they get hit for a crime there, in whatever jurisdiction they pawned it in, which is concealing, receiving and concealing.
Yeah, we approved this, we approved this last year, was it the same cost?
Yeah, every year, same cost, has not gone up.
I think we started about three years ago?
Yeah, three, four years ago, yeah.
Entertained a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the online, the leads online renewal for $2,128, line
Support.
Yeah, motion support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next we have our annual contribution to the Elginak Clay Library, $5,000, this is a budget item, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the, I mean, to contribute to the library, $5,000, and
Support. Support.
Okay, motion of support. Any, uh, discussion or questions?
What is this for?
For the, uh, Elginac Clay Library.
I know, for what, specifically?
We, uh, we contribute $5,000, and so does, um, um, Elginac. The St. Clair County runs the, the actual library.
Well, it's not operating expense, is it?
Yeah, well, it, it's maintenance. We own the building.
Okay.
A lot, and, and we use this for maintenance, uh, plowing the snow, uh, fixing something that breaks, uh, that type of a thing.
So that's $10,000 total from the other-
Yeah, right. And, uh-
Do they have receipts and anything for that?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
To say how much they spend per year?
Yeah, there's, there's a library board.
I'd like to see something like that.
Okay, we, uh, they, they only meet quarterly, but, uh, and sometimes it, uh, they, they, they have enough money, we don't even do it.
Well, let me ask you this, does anybody check to see who's doing the business over there? And see how much they're getting paid and-
Yeah, we-
Have a billing and stuff?
Like, uh, we, yeah, they, anything over a thousand that comes before us, like, we, we did carpeting not too long ago.
We've approved their expenses before.
Yeah, we, we've approved their expenses before, carpeting, uh, paint, uh, things like that. So it does come before us.
Okay.
Do we get first option on all their expenditures?
Of what?
Do we, do we have to approve all their expenditures? All their capital improvements?
Uh, I think it's over a thousand.
Anything over a thousand gotta come before us.
Um, like, like there's some annual things, like Elginac, they plow.
Yeah.
You know, they, they're snow plowing.
Maintenance.
Maintenance, you know, we, that, that we don't see, right? Um, I get a report, um, but it doesn't come before the board. Um, but a, anything expense, you know, a, any capitals, things like, like you say, carpeting or, we really haven't had to do too much to that building.
Is, is $5,000 the right number?
Yeah.
So they're not setting out a $200,000 surplus in the library?
No, no, no.
Okay.
Yeah, darn. So, okay. I'll, uh, I, I'll see if I can get a, a, a financial on that for, for the board, okay?
Yeah, and if it isn't enough, you know?
Right, well, we had to, uh, amp it up a little bit for the carpeting.
Okay, yeah, right.
Are we still looking for a motion? No, we had a motion.
Yeah, we, you know, we got motion of support, right?
Would that be to fix the roof or something that's leaking?
Yeah, fix roof, heating system, whatever. Um, okay, we have motion of support. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. Next we have our annual phone recording maintenance, uh, renewal, uh, for the police department.
This is, well, it was previously Van Belkum. They have since sold out to this new company, Word System Incorporated. This is our recording system, records both our 911, um, lines, our non-emergency lines as lo, as well as our radio traffic. So it pretty much ties into all of our communications over there, which is something that's pretty much required of us, so. This is, this has not gone, gone up at all either. It'd be nice to find something that was cheaper. Unfortunately, when you get into these, they're all pretty much right there, everybody that I've talked to, the maintenance is just crazy on these.
Oh, so this is a maintenance agreement?
Maintenance agreement.
Okay. It's cheap.
Yeah, it, to me, I think it's expensive, but-
No, I think that's cheap.
I guess for, for what they do with this, it's par for the course.
I'll make a motion to approve the annual phone recording maintenance, Word System renewal for $3,169.62, line 207.000.932.00.
Support. Okay, motion of support. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Next we have annual-
It's that time of year.
I, I, I was just gonna say.
You just bundled us all together?
Yeah, ID Networks Maintenance Renewal, uh, for our LiveScan, our fingerprint, our CAD, uh, records maintenance.
Yeah, no change in pricing here as well.
Mr. Supervisor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the police expenditure for the annual ID Network, uh, Networks Maintenance Renewal. The CAD system, mobile CAD record management, LiveScan, fingerprinting, in the amount of $9,530, coming from line item 207 dot 000 dot 768 dot 00.
Support.
Okay, we have motion of support. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. You can sit down a while, Mike. Yeah. Next we have a couple work orders for St. Clair County Road Commission. Um, I think we can do these together. Uh, cross culvert repair in La Croix and Harrison's Island, and asphalt patching on Colony Drive. I was just talking about that this morning. If you go down Colony Drive and you make the big turn at the end of the river, there's three big dips in the road, and this is what's gonna, this will take care of them, those dips.
Is this all done by St. Clair County, or did they contract that out?
St. Clair County will do these. And as a general rule, they come in under what they estimate by significantly under.
I'll make a motion, uh, to, uh, repair the cross culvert on La Croix on Harrison's Island, and then an asphalt patching on Colony Drive for, uh, a total of $15,384. And, uh, the one on La Croix is $9,984, and the one on Colony Drive is $5,400.
Support.
Okay, motion of support. Any more, uh, discussion?
Yeah, can I dive into the Colony Drive project just a little bit?
Yeah.
So we all know that we have a, a, a large water main project going on, right, as well? Um, so I just wanna make sure that we're not disrupting all of our new asphalt with a complete construction crew that's going up and down the road replacing the water main.
Good point.
Yeah.
Is this something that perhaps we could postpone until the water main was done and, and then clean it up?
Are they gonna come back out and fix it when we-
We could, I don't know if that, is this, that would impact this or not? What do you think, John?
We definitely could wait.
Yeah?
I mean, I don't know what the arrangement is with this, with, with the county, but-
Right. We could put, we could put it off till, uh-
June of 9th.
June.
Get in touch with St. Clair and coordinate it and find exactly what they're going to do in the next-
Tomorrow, if you'd like me to call them.
Yeah, let's, uh-
Cause there's always that possibility.
Right, and that's not a bad thought.
Yeah, delays or this or that, or whatever.
And there might be more.
Yeah, yeah.
There might be more. I don't know if they have any cross sections through there as well, right?
Well, it's caused by a few. You know what I'm talking about.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, they're-
That was a private deal though.
Right.
They're called them.
Yeah. I don't have a problem.
Do you think the residents do?
A little bit.
Have you got a lot of calls?
Well, I, I've gotten, not complaints, like, "Hey, you know, we got three dips," and, I mean, it's been like that for at least a year.
Sure. Oh, yeah. Yeah, like six more months matter?
Let's delay it.
Do we need to, uh, state that in the motion or anything?
Why don't you edit your motion, um, to delay the Colony asphalt patching?
Mm-hmm, okay.
And we can always bring it back if we have to also-
Do you wanna delay it, or do you wanna approve it for next year?
Yeah, approve it, but-
Approve the spending of the money, but delay doing it.
Till after the start, until after the Colony main project is complete?
Yeah.
That'd be great, I'd support that.
Well, why don't, why don't we prove, why don't we approve it pending-
Right.
-coordination with St. Clair County to see if it will in fact, and how it will in fact, impact it, instead of delaying it? Okay? Let's get some coordination between the two and see what's going on. John, you can do that.
I don't think you can answer that question this morning.
What about the engineer that's doing the, uh, the water main?
Yeah, but we don't know what potential damage could be to the roads or something.
There's gonna be some trucks going over.
Yeah. I would just put that on a June maintenance.
Yeah, okay.
I just think we, I think the residents would probably be more favorable and, to work with us if we're willing to approve it, we just wanna make sure we approve it after the construction.
And, and be all quite honest, there's gonna be a lot of trucks going down, whether they have been with, uh, SEMCO and everything else. But a couple more problems could arise during the construction, too.
Okay.
So we could address them at the same time.
So we'll amend the motion, um, to add to the motion, I should say, that the asphalt patching on Colony will be, um, delayed until after the, um, the, the water line-
Construction.
Construction is taken care of. But we have already approved the costs and so on to, to do that. And, uh, do it, uh, after the water line's in.
Okay, we have support on that?
Well, well, the, well, the thing, the thing about that is that after, after they get to construction, it may be more extensive than $5,400.
Well, we'd have to bring it back.
We've approved it for $5,400, and if we have to bring it back, yeah. We wanna get-
We could do that as a supplement, right?
Yes, yeah.
In a, in a new business of, of bringing line items.
Yeah, we could bring it, bring that back if had to.
Motion so drawn out with so many things on it, just, yeah.
We could do the whiteboard.
You doing okay out there?
Yes, no's. Okay. Okay, do we, do we know what the motion is? We're gonna approve the cross culvert repairing La Croix Road, and we're approving $5,400 for asphalt patching on Colony Road to be done after the water main project is completed.
Well stated. Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Uh, we gotta do a roll call, I think Chrissy?
Yes.
I'm yes. Joanne?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
You guys down there, Sandy?
Yes.
Yes.
And Chris? Well, do, I, I just won't sign the, the Colony one until it's appropriate.
Till it's time.
So. Okay, uh, next we have, uh, two items for our auditors. We have Stuart Bovee Wippe, our annual audit, uh, we have a proposal letter, and then also Stuart Bovee Wippe Preparation for OPEB Calculations, which is something different and new this year that we're required to do. Um, and let me tell you, I mean, the, the audit for $29,000, I mean, they do other things that we, we pay for, but what were you, were you spending for audits?
$80,000.
$80,000 for audits, you know? Seven, eight years ago?
Yeah.
Crazy.
It was terrible.
So. I'll entertain a motion, you can combine the two if you wish.
I'll make a motion to approve Stuart Bovee and Wippe Annual Audit in the amount of $29,600, and Preparation of OPEB calculation for $4,500.
Support.
Okay, have motion of support for both the annual audit and, uh, preparation of the OPEB calculation with Stuart Bovee and Wippe. Any discussion?
The annual audit is a, is it a, a function of a state requirement?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And?
So it's, uh, both of them are actually, so it's OPEB.
Okay, and, and this is a similar fee to what we paid last year?
Yes, I, yeah, it is.
Do we have your support?
Mm-hmm, it's next week.
Okay.
Yeah, they, uh-
It's two weeks long.
Is it?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a lot of work.
Sounds like a lot of fun.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Any more discussion?
Nope.
Uh, roll call vote. Joanne?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Chrissy?
Yes.
Me, yes. Motion passes.
I'm sorry, not to, before you go on, does this come out of a line item?
Yes, are, we have audit, and all the departments do too.
Okay.
It, it gets spread out.
What's that?
Yeah, through police, fire, general, um-
So all the line items?
Yeah, yeah, it's like-
For all departments.
Yeah, for all departments. Yeah, water sewer, hazard, police, uh, fire, we divvy it up. Okay, resolution 1934, setting the police rate for, actually it's 2018 rules, cause it goes out in December as a typo, should be 18, not 19 rule. Setting the, the 2000, or, resolution 2018-34, setting police rate for the 2018 rule of 4.6 mils. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2018-34, setting police rate for the 2018 rule at 4.6 mils.
It's, it's mistyped on our agenda, but not in the resolution, just to make-
I just, I just checked that.
Make that clear. Okay, have motion of support. Any discussion?
So it looks like going back in, in our notes from last year, we're proposing to go up about one quarter of a mil.
A .25, and that's gonna fund the, the, um, a couple things, but mostly the resource officer.
Resource officer for the school?
Yep, and remember when we came to that, we made it public, well, if we're gonna do that, we gotta, you know, to pay for it, gotta go up a quarter.
Yep.
And, I don't know about you, but I, I voiced that to several people, I didn't get any pushback whatsoever.
No, quite the opposite, actually. Quite the opposite, actually.
Yeah.
No pushback.
Any more discussion?
Should we read that, now therefore be resolved? Read it so that the people can-
You can if you want. I've been talking too much.
I, in part of this resolution, it states, "Now therefore be it resolved that the amount to be assessed for police protection for the following year has been determined to be 4.60 mils based on taxable value of both ad valorem and special acts, the estimated revenue to be $2,070, uh, 7,500-
Thousand.
75,000, 2, 289 dollars, and the Clay Township Board of Trustees hereby direct the Clay Township supervisor to spread such special assessment levy." Roll call.
Okay.
Yeah, we gotta do a roll call.
Any more discussion? Roll call vote. Mark, you're up.
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Chrissy?
Yes.
Artie, yes. Okay, it passes.
Joanne.
Oh, you, Joanne, I'm sorry.
You, yes.
Okay. Next we have resolution 2018-35, setting fire rate for 2018 rule at 2.125 mils.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2018-35, setting fire rate for the 2018 rule at 2.125 mils.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any discussion?
How much does that increase?
A half. Half. Raises up to $958,691.
Yep. Good.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any more discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Sandy?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Chrissy?
Yes.
Artie, yes. Joanne?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next we have resolution 2018-36, setting the garbage rate roll for 2018. And that's staying the same. It's 172 for most of the people that have garbage and recycling. It's 137 for people on Russell Island and the Out Islands, because they don't have recycling. And the Out Islands is 120.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2018-36, setting the garbage rate for 2018 role at 172, 137, and 120.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any more discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. And Chris?
Yes.
Chrissy?
Yes.
Artie, yes. Joanne?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes. Next we have resolution 2018, special assessment aquatic management cleaning. And this is a special assessment to set the, this one's to set the district? Or the public hearing. To set a public hearing. And when is the public hearing going to be? September 4th. Okay, so this is to set a public hearing for the special assessment on September 4th.
Is that your motion, sir?
Yep. Support. Okay, motion and support. What, we have about 80%? We have about 85% that are on board with us, so it's a renewal. Okay, motion and support for a public hearing on September 4th for the aquatic management canal cleaning. And this is for Farnsworth, Phillips Drive. Those canals over there. Roll call, where am I? Chrissy?
Yes.
Artie, yes. Joanne?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next we have Police Department, TASER purchase. Welcome back, Mike.
Hey, glad to be back. Okay, well, the reason I'm before you on this one is we recently been told by TASER that the current TASERS we have, they will no longer stand behind. Reason B is the TASERS that we currently have are obsolete and have been into life a few years ago. The ones we have now, we purchased them from Roseville when they bought new TASERS. So they were used when we bought them. So most of them are 11 years old, the newest being eight years old. And basically what TASER has said now is they will not stand behind them any liability. So basically if anything goes wrong, you're on your own. With any of the other TASER products, they stand by it with, I think it's over a million dollar liability that they step up to with it, along with their support. With that being said, we looked, I sat down and was talking with Artie. We're looking into different options with this, and we've been looking at different options. I wanted to, until they came out and told us this, we wanted to start replacing so many a year and get us to where we need to be. But now, basically, we're hanging out there by, if, God forbid, something did happen, where do we sit? The company that manufactures is not going to stand behind us. So we started looking into programs. The one program, the, basically it's a payment option with no financing, no finance charges on it. And it's a five-year program. With this program, as I showed in front of you there, we got a couple of different options. One thing I did after I got this in today is I sat down and started crunching some more numbers with Officer Smith, who is our TASER instructor for our department. Just to give you an idea, with TASER, they're very critical of how the program works. And with this program, he has to keep a running log monthly, going through downloading each of these TASERS on a computer program. They store every time that trigger is depressed. Anything that goes on with that TASER, they want, they want to show a record that it is an annual check, or a daily check of this TASER every time you go on duty, that everything's functioning properly. It'll show what the battery life is, the condition, everything across the board. So in order to be covered, you have to be on a pretty routine maintenance with this and stay on top of it. In which we had to send Officer Smith out to school for this. He got training in this. He's the only one that can actually instruct anything with TASERS within the department. I know I put down there at 24 TASERS. We're going to, we want to break that down to 21, which is going to save us, saves a little bit of money here. The problem with the TASERS is they're not cheap. But they have us on that one because basically it's a monopoly.
Nobody else sells them.
I mean, unless, of course, you want to buy a stun gun from somebody off of eBay, but that's usually not a good idea for what we're doing, but
We're going to get the liability with me.
Yeah. And, you know, it breaks down, and I think where I broke it down, I think we can get, save us a few thousand dollars a year, breaking the number down. However, the other thing that we looked at here was the basic plan or the unlimited plan. And what that means is with the basic plan, that covers just the initial equipment that you get, then you're done. Now, with these TASERS, we required the training that we have to do a year. Each officer is going to deploy at least three training cartridges, which is almost $40 apiece. Once you start doing the math, just at the training portion of it, we're at over like $2,400 right there. Now, for the $3,000 more for the unlimited plan, that also covers any batteries, any duty cartridges that we need across the board. So it's a gamble. Do, for the extra $500 or so, do we take the gamble? And whether we're going to spend that much or not? I think at the end of the day, we probably will. Because, one, if it's a point of their supplying these cartridges, we're going to train more with them as well. Not just the minimum. Really, that's why we do right now, is the minimum.
So 21 TASERS is going to be, is going to staff the, your department completely?
It will staff the department completely. 24, we are trying to look down the road a little bit.
How many do you deploy on a daily basis?
On a daily basis, we don't deploy.
Everyone has their own.
Everyone has their own. Now, this is another thing going back to, and I know me and Chris talked on this, is, and we've done this in the past, where we bought so many TASERS and then just as people came on duty, they took one, went out and brought it back. We ran into a lot of problems with that. One, the wear and tear on, tenfold. Since we went to issue an equipment to each individual officer, we have seen the care and the treatment of them night and day difference. When you do an inspection of equipment, you can obviously tell that somebody is responsible for just that piece of equipment. And that pretty much, anybody I talk to holds true across the board. Not to mention, like I talked with Chris, if, God forbid, we did have something that happened to where most of our booths are on the ground out there. I don't want it to be where half the people have their equipment and half the people don't have their equipment. You know, we ran into that years in the past. I don't know if any of you remember the old State Park fire that we had here. And we ran into a big problem there with prep radios. We didn't have enough to go around for everybody, which, George, I know you remember that back then. And that's not a position you'd like to be in, having guys that are out there running around without the equipment that they should have. It's a tough pill to swallow with this. Problem is, there's nowhere else we can go to shop it.
Can you go over this document that you gave us?
Yep.
Which one are you recommending?
Which one?
Page by page and see what we got.
Which one?
All of them, really.
On the unlimited here?
Yeah.
Okay. On the unlimited, it is saying here, our first year price, and it breaks it down right here, by your net unit price and what it comes with here. As you see here, the yellow X2 CEW handle, that is the TASER itself. Or the TASER handle and the battery pack within that. Your TASER 60 year one payment, as you see, the first year, it's $100 knocked off for the first year. As you go down here to right-hand holster, pretty much explains itself. The 25-foot non-conductive training smart cartridge, that's supplying two of those right off the bat with this. The TASER X62 Unlimited, those are also training cartridges. The kit data port, what that is for, that is a one-time cost, but that is so that they can hook to our network and download all the information from them. The other thing here is the SIM suit. What that is, is somebody wears that and they get shot by the TASER.
Who's going to volunteer for that? Artie?
I think one of the trustees should
Got it. So, yeah, that's, that's what everything's broken down to right there. But that is, and then after that, subsequently after that, the only cost is, you know, the cost on the TASER itself, nothing else. If we go with the unlimited, like I say, anything we use from it, they will replace as we go. If we don't, it's something that we have to purchase as we go. And like I say, right off the bat, one-time training every year is going to be $2,400 right there. So
And what is this year, year one, year two, three, four, five?
That is the breakdown of, and if you look at the very final page, it's a breakdown of, that's the payments we make each year. And what I'm suggesting is the first year, that we take those funds from our drug forfeiture funds, which is something that is earmarked for things just like this, which is something along the lines of non-lethal force. The other thing is, there is a couple of different models that I showed you there. The X26P as well as the X2. The X26P is a model that's been out for several years now, so I expect that one probably be the next one that they will render as end of life. The newer one, the X2, a lot more advanced, comes with more features. One of the good features on that is, is you actually have two times to deploy on that. If they shoot and the first time miss, they've got a second chance to try to deploy.
And you said the XP, that lifespan may fall, or become to, become to the end prior to this being done, if you were to, in the next couple of years?
Don't know. All I can do is guess on that. The only thing I can say is that the X, the ones we have right now are the X26. These are the X26P single cartridge. And I'm thinking by, everybody I'm talking to, they're thinking they're phasing them right out because they're going to the newer model with the X2, which is pretty much the latest technology that they have out right now. So all I'm doing is guessing at this point.
Well, we certainly don't want to go down the road and have it become obsolete prior to the end of the
Correct. Which, I mean, I think they would stand by regardless during the, during the period of this contract.
Or at least, or at least have something in there that they would purchase them back and get the new ones at some point in time.
Right. But I'm looking at, I mean, the cost difference really isn't
Cost difference, I'm just calculating, is about $2,000 per year. If we go with the unlimited versus if we buy them outright and pay as we go for the cartridges and everything. And you're, you're guessing that we probably go spend more than $2,000 on
Oh, yeah, well, right off, right off the bat, like I said, right off the bat, you're talking, well, if you figure, if you've got 20 officers that are being trained on this, times three cartridges apiece, the cartridges are almost $40 apiece. So figure $120 times 20 officers, that's just one training.
Yeah.
In itself. If we did two trainings a year, we more than went through what that unlimited pays for.
Yep.
So it gives that ability to where we can do more training. And I can tell you right now, the reason we haven't done more training with them is because it's so expensive.
Sure.
With this, it gives us that freedom to be able to do more with it, which, come down at the end of the day, I mean, you can't do enough training. And this allows us to do that. I mean, it's a tough pill to swallow. The only thing is and the reason I had this come before you tonight is talking to the rep. They ended this program, but he said if we acted, if we were to act quickly on this, he could still get us under the umbrella of this program. Otherwise, I would have, I wouldn't have sprung this on you like this.
Program may be the five-year interest free?
Right.
Okay. Do we need to adjust the axiom bid to reflect 21 units instead of 24 units?
Yes, I will have to do that. And basically the breakdown is just going to be, I mean, if you do the math as far as, we're going to save, well, 358 per unit the first year, and then 458 per unit each additional year.
We can make a motion to just 21 TASERS versus the dollar amount.
Not to exceed.
Say that again?
We can make a motion instead of the dollar amount for the 24, to do the purchase for 21 TASERS.
Which will be at the same cost as what's shown on the paperwork here.
So it'd be three less, or we can do the math and figure it out. I don't have my calculator with me.
Well, I did the math, but I don't know if the discount would still stand.
What's happening?
We're sitting
I don't know that the same discount would stand if you changed the quantity. So, I mean, I don't know that our math would even be valid.
Yeah, there's no difference in discount if we change the quantity.
So you'd still get that full amount listed here?
Right. It's going to go by the price that you see there right now, which, let's see, I had it figured out down to first year
First year would be $7,706.
We got to add the 188 in for the data port kit. So bringing that to 7348, then each year subsequently 9160.
Do we have any miscellaneous in the police budget?
Well, he had mentioned that there possibility exists
We got the drug task force fund.
Using our drug forfeiture
For some drug forfeiture money?
Drug forfeiture money.
To run out the first
Run out the first year, and then we can discuss next year.
Probably get three years out of it, actually.
Yeah. We can discuss next year's. And like, you know, me and Chris were talking earlier, and I said, we don't know what could happen with those funds from now till then. This might be able to cover us throughout the whole, the life of this. But at least it allows us to get the TASER, get TASERS replaced that we need to get replaced right now. And then we can work on next year's if need be. We're going to have, we'll have to figure out a way that we budget it. But this will let us get the ball rolling. And these are the things that, you know, that the kind of money is actually earmarked for, so.
So, Board, due to our current liability, function of the existing TASERS the officers have, shelf life of a product, the opportunity to go five-year interest free, and the availability of our downstroke from a drug forfeiture money, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchase of a five-year TASER 60 plan, the TASER 60 Unlimited plan set before us as carved out. Adjusting the quantity from 24 units to 21 units.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any more discussion? Everybody clear with it?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Okay, where do I, where did I leave off last?
Real quick, one, one second, just so you know, the TASER provides, it's a $10 million liability policy. As I know I said 1 million earlier, it's a $10 million.
$10 million.
So Chief Sore clear, you're supporting the X2 Unlimited plan, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call vote. Joanne?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Chrissy?
Yes.
Artie, yes. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That's it. Under new business, let's see, we have board member comments. And Sandy, got any board member comments?
Yes, I do. I am actually working the election polls tomorrow, so I look forward to seeing everybody out there, and don't forget to come out and vote. And I also wanted to say that I've been coming out to, I had the opportunity to go to one of the Wednesday Free For All. And I've driven by the Thursday Music in the Park, and it seems like it's very well received by everybody.
Oh, yeah.
I look forward to seeing everybody out there on Wednesday and Thursday.
Very good. Chris?
At 12:01 a.m. this morning, MHSAA allows active participation in fall sports. So if you've got children in the middle school and/or high school ages and they're interested in playing a fall sport, have them come to the high school and sign up and register, because it's out.
Good. Chrissy?
The township will be open on Friday, September 14th, from 9 a.m. to 5 p.m. Treasury Department for collection of taxes.
Got so much fun.
I just want people to come and see me that day.
That's right. I'll come and see you, maybe. Mark?
Yeah, you know, as, as we
Yeah, uh, you know, as, as we approve these contracts, bid, bid projects or projects, with, with bids going out, uh, and, and, and being a responsible trustee, as long as the other trustees, I, I'd like to see that at least a trustee or all the trustees are involved in some of these awards that are given to these projects, uh, making sure that, I know, and, and I'm gonna identify the Colony one, we had a, we hired an engineering group to go ahead and award a project, based with John, I'm sure that it went up fine, but, uh, we wanna make sure that us being members of the board understand exactly what that project and that process is, okay? There's things in there that I could've brought to the table that I didn't see in the original project, so I wanna make sure that we don't leave anything laying out there that is subject to questions. Thank you.
My turn.
Yep.
Um, we haven't had any ZBA meetings for a while, but we have one this Wednesday, this week, and before us are four different variances. Um, I shouldn't say different, there's three of them that are on the island, and one that is here on the mainland, and all of them have to do with setbacks, primarily front yard or backyard setbacks, and so we'll see what those end up being.
And I, I think August the eleventh, we have a public hearing on that, unless you, you said that, so.
Oh, for what?
For the, uh, front year, uh, front yard year, uh, excuse me.
Rear yard.
Rear yard setbacks for waterfront.
Yeah.
August the eleventh is public hearing, the Planning Commission.
August the eleventh?
Is that still true? Okay.
August eleventh?
That's for, that's for Planning Commission.
For Planning Commission.
August eleventh is a Saturday.
Excuse me, that's the, uh, that's the Rotary Golf outing, so.
Yeah.
That, that public hearing is to be, to be announced.
Have to be the fifteenth.
So your public hearing for planning is not the eleventh?
No, no, it's not.
Probably the fifteenth.
I think it's September.
Or in September?
Just a minor correction, that the Rotary Golf outing is scheduled for September the seventh.
Seventh, thank you.
Yes.
The ZBA meeting is this Wednesday.
All right, okay, just to be clear, Johnny Lee's Golf outing is the eleventh.
So is Rafton. So is Rafton.
The Yard Sale Trail.
And the Yard Sale Trail.
Everyone totally confused here.
Oh, yeah, the Yard Sale Trails is-
You have any-
Yeah, I was just gonna tell everyone to vote, and, and it was a good, fun event, uh, a couple of weeks ago, the wrestling team, uh, they did a sand wrestling in the park and the volleyball and that, so that was a lot of fun, and there was a lot of participation. It was a little rainy, but, uh, I think the kids had a blast, I did. And, yeah, the Music in the Park, and the Free For All Wednesdays, they've been, they've been a lot of fun. Last week, we had the Beatles, uh, mock band Wednesday, and it was, I enjoyed it, it was a lot of fun, and I know, uh, this coming Thursday, we got a, a really good band called Renegade, so, yeah, it's all good, a lot of positive things going on. So I have, motion, uh, next-
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah, our next meeting's gonna be on Harrison's Isle on August twentieth.
We're sure of that, the twentieth of August?
Yes, I am.
Yep.
And, uh, motion, take a motion to adjourn?
Yes, I, I agree, I already motioned.
All in favor, ayes, let's go.
Aye.
Thanks for coming, everybody. Have a good day.